Okay, welcome everyone. I'd like to call to order the Stratford Planning Commission public hearing for Tuesday, October 16th at 7:00 PM. Let's see, everyone is present, so we don't have any alternative alternates. Before calling for the first petition, I would like to inform those of you who have never appeared before us that it is the policy of this commission to have questions of the petitioner directed through the chairman. The chair reserves the right to rule on cross-examination for the purpose of clarification of technical questions. I wish to announce that should any items on tonight's agenda take more time than anticipated, this public hearing may conclude at 11:00 PM and be continued to another date which will be established at that time. Any items not heard by 11:00 PM tonight will be heard at the continued public hearing. For the record, petitions to be heard this evening were advertised in the Connecticut Post on October 3rd and October 10th, 2018. These properties were duly posted on September 11th, 2018. All right, we're here to hear the petition of 821 Wood End Road, lots A and B, seeking a two-lot subdivision. The petitioner is here and present, I see, and I -- do you have other people with you? And if you could give us your name and information?
Absolutely. My name's Washington Cabezas of Cabezas De Angelis Engineers and Surveyors. We have an office at 78 Elm Street in Bridgeport, and behind me are the owners of the property, Mr. Chris and William Malone. We did receive staff comments from the zoning office, and I did update the site plan, the records subdivision map, to show the -- that we're addressing the comments. So I wanted to pass out those revised maps if I could.
Thank you. We already got their mailings, right?
Can I come in?
Last month, I thought.
Washington, did you notice the mailing, the certificate of mailings?
Yeah. I think it was the last month. That's why I have to see these a little bit. We've had them the last month. the subdivision. So what we have here is a 5.66 acre property entirely that's being split into a front and rear lot. We're not rear per se, because we have frontage on Century Drive. That's -- that makes this property zoning compliant, and not a rear lot per se. So we have -- we'll end up with 1.84 acres on Lot A, and 3.82 net acres on Lot B. And I say net because we're subtracting out the wetland areas as required in the zoning regulations. So the intent is to prepare -- is to propose this property line -- I'm sorry. Oh, I'm very sorry about that. Is this better? Okay. Oh, excellent. Thank you. So, as I was saying, the purpose is to propose this property line here, coming down sort of in the center of the property and back down to Wood End Road. The Lot B will have 43 feet of frontage on Wood End Road, but it still will have almost 62 feet of frontage on Century Drive, making it a zoning compliant property. So one of the comments were that we have -- we need a primary structure on the rear lot. We already have one on the front lot, Lot A. So we do have a structure in the back that we're going to call the primary structure, and therefore be compliant with the Lot B zoning regulations and the MA Zone. We do comply with everything, and the other comment were the accessory structures on the property that have to be three feet off from the side yards and the rear yards, which we're going to do. So we have -- this here is actually -- relabeled it as vehicle storage, or vehicle trailers, rather, and those aren't like stationary trailers, like you see in construction yards. They're actually mobile, they have wheels on them, and they just kind of park there on the side. But I just noted, just to make sure we're abiding by the regulations, that they're to be parked three feet from the boundary line. I just had a picture of that that I wanted just to pass out to the board. These trailers here will be parked three feet from the property line. There's some that are right on the property line, like by Century Drive. One's nine feet away, so that's already compliant. There's one here that will be moved over, and one straddling the property line adjacent to the next door building, which is his trailer, but he leases the area in the back here, and he will be moving that over the three feet as well. Here we have two pockets of wetlands, and I just want to show that we have an approved wetland permit to put the lots in, the records subdivision, so that we're complying with inland wetlands as well. What they required, in brief, is that there's gravel areas, gravel surfaces in the regulated areas that will be removed and replaced with topsoil, loam and seed, so that is more of a vegetative cover in the regulated area. And that's basically all they required us to do. Also, we're going to put a fence line along the -- adjacent to the 50-foot setback, so that there's no further encroachment into the regulated area. I'm sorry, there's a proposed fence at gravel edge, okay? So there's no further encroachment into the regulated area on the easterly pocket, and on the westerly pocket as well. We have -- we're going to put a wall barrier here for the same reason, so there's no encroachment into the regulated area. The property, there's no proposed construction on the property, no new buildings or paved areas or anything like that. The entire property itself, the entire five and a half acres, is going to remain in its current condition and its current use as well. I did receive an email today from Mr. John Casey in reference to engineering comments, and he just had a couple minor comments, as he stated, which is monumentation of any proposed street lines. If we have any street line changes, they have to be monumented. We're not doing that here. I think he might have just said that because I shaded an area here on Century Drive, showing that we have ownership of this little triangular portion here to abide by the street frontage requirements. So I can clarify that with Mr. Casey. Also, he doesn't want any drainage lines crossing property lines with the new property line that we have here, so we're going to investigate that and make sure that's not the case. And if there is, he just noted that there should be drainage easements on the plan showing that. So this will have to be filed eventually after approval, and if he has any -- I'll make sure he has -- that we do satisfy any of his comments at that time. He mentioned that if there are lines crossing the property lines, drainage lines, that there'll be a drainage easement, which we can do no problem, that's fine. And that was pretty much the gist of it on his comments. If there's any questions about the subdivision, by all means, I'm all ears.
Mr. Watson?
Yes, I have a couple questions.
Sure.
I drove by to examine the property during our last big rainstorm here.
Okay.
And I saw evidence coming down the front two driveways of the front two existing driveways
On Wood Road?
Onto Wood End.
Okay.
Onto Wood End, of massive amounts of runoff that were running into Wood End Road.
Okay.
The roadway there was about at least six inches deep. Now, I know that area is traditionally a flooding area.
Yes.
The whole area.
It's a one big flood zone.
It's one big flood plain.
Correct.
This is one of the few properties that are elevated, so at some point it's actually been filled and elevated, it looks like to be about three or four feet above all the existing property around it, from what I could see. That's just an assumption. I assume that goes back to the 40s, and -- but I'm looking at -- I know from speaking with people around there that it becomes impassable. We are going to, at some point, have to find ways to mitigate that run -- that rainwater.
Okay.
The new four --
MS4.
The MS4 regulations require that property keep its rainwater on its own property.
Correct.
What -- the only question I have here is, you're basically splitting a five-acre property, I'm going to -- I'm using round average.
Sure, sure.
Three acres into one and two acres into the other.
Sure.
If you were to split that differently, could we find a way to meet the future requirement, well, the existing requirements as of July 2017, of keeping rainwater on property? Because you would become the best neighbor in the world if you could mitigate some of that rainwater that's currently running down your impervious side driveways into Wood End. That's my biggest question here. I have been reading up a little bit about wetlands. Theoretically, you could use those wetlands as a holding tank for some of that rainwater, but it sounds to me like you just got information from conservation that said they want you to eliminate all of those existing connections. So maybe I'm totally wrong on that, but it just seems to me that that's something that should be carefully explored, because you now have a property that essentially is, I would guess it's 85% impervious pavement or building at this point.
Right now, with the current lot configuration, we are -- we will be impervious area. We will -- Lot A will have 64% impervious area, which is the front lot here, and then Lot B, because it's pretty open, will only be 16% impervious, and that's what the net lot area is subtracting out.
And the 16 is the area directly by the gated area?
The 16% covers the
The roadway?
The easterly driveway area.
Okay, okay.
All of that impervious area and all the small buildings on the property.
That's my second question.
Yes.
The area for entry into the B property, I assume, the upper property.
Yes.
Is through the roadway that comes from Wood End?
The existing driveway on Wood End Road, that's the primary entrance.
So there is no entry through the Century area?
There is access, yes. There -- you can -- the yard owned by the abbot or here has like an open access to the back area here.
Okay.
There's a gate on Century Drive.
Yes.
There's a gate on that.
There is a gate. I saw this, I saw the gate there.
Right.
That's what I was assuming that was the main entrance into the property at some point in the future.
If we get approval, they will.
Okay. The only other thing that I saw from looking back on earlier wetlands maps were, the wetlands were -- the one on the right was mapped at about twice the size that I see now on the maps. And I don't know if that's because of filling that's taken place since that last map was done, but it was a much larger site than what I saw here. It also was not delineated with a circle, it was delineated with an oval, which cuts -- would cut down further into the southern portion of that property, that I'm just -- before we say yes without considering any of this, I just want to make sure, because if that is the case, then essentially your gated area off Century Drive becomes much more difficult to accomplish with a 50-foot wetland
Regulated area.
Setback area around it. I just have to also add that I want to see you do something with the property. I think just cleaning it up is a great move, is a good thing for Stratford, it needs it, it's obvious. And it doesn't reflect the B property at all, or the lower property at all. The lower property seems to be really well-maintained and in great shape, so I understand that. I just, at this point, don't know who is one going to come in, other than a place to store flatbeds, going to want to come into that upper property with any kind of income-generating scheme. It doesn't seem to me that it's a big enough property to really put in any kind of an operation. The third -- the final question, or the final comment that I will make is that we are spending a lot of time looking at our POCD, our Plan of Conservation Development. This area still is owned for light industrial, but our POCD suggests that we do light industrial slash office park, office building, even residential.
And those were topics that Chris and William and I all spoke about together, and in their future, they're keeping the property, so in their future endeavors and developments with the property, they will abide by those guidelines.
Particularly given that that property backs onto residential area.
Correct.
That's what I'm most concerned about seeing that. I also know that wetlands are expanding, they're not contracting, unless we physically make them go away.
Right, I mean, I called in to do the survey of the property. We hired Mr. William Kenny, who's a soil scientist licensed in the state of Connecticut, which is, you know, the protocol when we do any surveys and any properties that have wetlands. We call him in, get it flagged as per what he's supposed to do and obligated to do as a soil scientist. And these pockets here were all flags that were set by his office under his purview. So that's what I have, you know, that's what I'm trying -- I know you have
You and I both know that that's a snapshot in time.
Right, right.
If he had have gone out there a month ago, he would have seen a wetland three times that size.
Right, so
Evidence of a wetland.
So, and there are more wetland maps that cover larger regions and things like that, but in my experience, I just see that they're very approximate, and they are existing wetlands there, but the exact size is, it's such a large region to cover, that they're very -- the actual pockets are very approximate in shape until a soil scientist is actually augering, you know, in the ground and looking at the soils and seeing what it actually reveals.
But you understand my concern.
I do.
There are three parties here.
I do.
There are this party, the people that live to the north of you, and the people that use
And we are
A public road to the south of you.
Correct.
That I think have to be spoken for in this same situation.
No, you're absolutely right. The neighbors to the north, we did speak to them previously, and we did accommodate a couple of concerns they had, and
I see you've already, you'd already done it in your first map. I'm not
Correct. Well, and we just, you know, we're just trying to work with them as well, and they're very, at this point, as far as I know, they're very happy with what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Staley?
Yes, John Staley.
Hi.
How are you doing? In reading the materials, specifically Jay's letter dated September 6th, he, there's mention of Lot B being, they were talking about moving a trailer, and from this letter is saying everything has to be removed in Lot B, because Lot A makes that non-compliant. Is that correct?
That's correct, but I think, well, I'll let the applicant respond to that, because we did have a little conversation about that in over the past. And to the applicant's defense, we sent out our comments several weeks ago, and he got them 48 hours ago, so he put this stuff together very -- so
I see.
I'll let him respond.
Tried the best I could.
Thank you.
Tried the best I could. So, yeah, you're right, absolutely. So Jay brought up a very good point, that if we don't have a primary structure and only an accessory structure, then we're non-compliant. So that's why I mentioned previously, to satisfy the comment, we are actually considering the structure in the middle here, the primary structure of the property, so that we are zoning compliant. And at that point, we can have the other trailers as accessory structures. Is that, that makes sense?
And that explanation satisfied my concern.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I do have a question about that. If, in all of your other earlier information, you're presenting that lot essentially as an undeveloped lot, so you essentially are now changing this, that you're
We're satisfying the zoning staff comments, that's correct.
Okay, so this is a developed lot?
Yes, with this being the primary structure.
So that primary structure then needs to essentially have a C of O and everything else in it, and have a defined business use and all of that, which at this point, we would have to determine, does that fit within our POCD? Before we could make any kind of a judgment on this.
Any other questions? I do have a couple of questions.
Yes.
You said you don't intend to change the usage of the site.
Correct.
What is the usage of the site?
Okay, so basically, there's three primary uses here. The front being a construction equipment retail building outfit, which will have its own parcel here, and the back, there's two, and Chris, by all means, correct me if I'm wrong, there's two tenants that he leases to. One is Royal Flush for the storage, for the porta potty containers that they store on-site, and one is for construction equipment that the owner to the abbot or to the east here at 105 Century DPS Services, they store their equipment, they use it as a storage for their -- to park their vehicles, their construction vehicles there.
Okay. But you're going to be moving their vehicles to comply with the setback and other
We're moving the trailers, correct. We're going to be moving their, not the vehicles are okay, but the, and to comply with inland wetlands, we're going to be moving their vehicle, we do have to, we have to, we do have to move their vehicles out of the regulated area, which we're intending to do. But the trailers that they're currently in use will abide by the setbacks.
Now, you're, where it says roofed concrete pad, that is going to be this
The new primary structure, correct.
Primary, and what is that going to be?
Basically, it's a vehicle washing area.
A vehicle washing area?
Correct, that's what it's current uses.
And what kind of, how do you wash these vehicles?
Well, they have plumbing there that where they wash off their vehicles there. Christina, you want to elaborate on that?
I think, yeah, they just
Regulation for
Oh, sure.
Washing vehicles?
Containing regulations.
I'm sorry, your question again? I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
No, go ahead.
Your question again? No, 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 sorry.
The question was, you said it's going to be a car washing, truck washing?
Yeah, their vehicles, they're going to wash things there, they're going to store their equipment, they're going to wash. It's like you can drive things up into it
Uh-huh.
To carport, so they can drive their trucks and clean their trucks, and then drive them back out.
Okay. Does conservation and inland wetlands and other commissions realize that?
We walked the site with Christina, the superintendent, and she saw everything, because we want to give her whatever she wants with the fence protecting the wetlands, so we walked the full site with her.
When you wash these vehicles, what are you washing them with?
Water, just high power, just pressure, some pressure.
There's no soap, there's no chemicals?
I don't believe so. I don't, this is not my, I don't do this for a living, my understanding is they're just using water.
Okay, Mr. Staley?
Yes, it's, so like most car washing places now are self-contained.
Okay. Again, I'm sorry, I'm just
The water goes back
Sure. Yes, there's
And doesn't shed.
Okay.
Is this what this is going to be? Are you
With tanks and so forth?
That's what was the question.
He's asking about the catch basin. He's saying, is it all self-contained? I know there's these catch basins here, which I believe is what currently captures the water, storm water.
The storm water?
Correct.
I see a holding tank there, is that the
Yeah.
Is that where the water is, or how do you get the water there?
I think that's where the pressurized water is to have pressure and wash off the vehicles.
So you're doing that now, currently?
Correct, it's a current operation, correct.
Okay, and as far as our engineering department, or to make this a permanent structure or the primary structure, what, have they required you to do anything specific?
Not as of yet, so we're planning, once this is approved, we're going to file the mylar's and everything, and if there's any other remediations that have to take place, we'll by all means take care of that.
Now, in the future, you're, did I understand you to say that you plan on following the
OPCD?
POCD, yeah.
Yeah, yes, if, yeah, if the rear lot becomes, plans to be developed, come in with a new site plan of just the rear lot, with the new building layout, architectural plans for approval, correct.
Yes, Mr. Watson?
Which business is using the pad?
The pad?
Yeah.
Here, over here?
Here, yes.
I believe it's Royal Flush, is that correct? Royal Flush.
Okay, so are they cleaning trucks, or are they cleaning porta potties?
I think both.
Okay, so where is the water going? My question, the reason I'm asking this question is, right now, this area is
There's a trench drain here on the pad itself?
I understand, I assume it has to go somewhere in the ground.
It's probably just infiltrating into the ground.
So is it going into our wastewater piping?
No, there's no sanitary line connection that
Well, then, right next to it here, I see on the map that it says that there is a catch basin.
There are catch basins to the east of that area.
So none of those are connected into our stormwater system?
Oh, well, this, that was a comment that John Casey had, and we're going to, we're going to show those pipes, if there are pipes. I'm thinking these are drywells, just by doing the survey myself, these appear to be drywells, there's no connections.
Was wetlands aware of this?
Wetlands saw the entire record map, absolutely, and this was, and it was revised to meet wetlands, but
But essentially, we're talking, we have components of raw sewage here at some level, which is, I would assume it's several hundred yards from the shore.
It's definitely immediately draining into the trench drain here. We'll investigate to satisfy John Casey's comments, where this is going, if it is going anywhere.
We are having a real problem all along the western part of this area. It's not your problem, it's our problem.
Oh, okay.
With high bacteria counts.
Okay.
And right now, the state is trying to determine how much of it's coming from Stratford and how much of it's coming from Bridgeport.
Oh.
So we have to look very carefully at where we are getting possible bacteria added to our waterways. So this, to me, looks like a point of raw sewage that really does need to be looked at very carefully before we say that this continues, particularly since essentially this is a non, this is a non-permitted business at this point.
Well, the containers are actually empty when they come to the site.
Then why are they washing them?
We're not, we're just, I'm sorry. This is William Malone.
Sure.
By the DEP standards for Royal Flush, the toilets have to be pumped on-site before they are transported on a truck. So, for example, if there was an event, they have to be pumped at the event and then brought back.
And then brought back.
And then brought back.
Okay.
But now this, I'm sorry, but now this sewage is in this truck, and you're just washing the outside of the truck?
Correct.
Are you also washing the porta jawn?
We're washing the outside. They spray everything down, because they obviously like to get everything to look as clean as possible, so by law, to comply with the DEP.
But you don't clean the inside of the porta jawn, is that what you're saying?
They don't, I mean, they go through and like, they'll take the toilet paper out, but to my understanding is, is no, they're not doing anything. They spray this down completely before they're transported.
Right. Right, okay.
And then they spray them again, sometimes if they look on the outside, they're dirty, they have graffiti or something, they'll spray them down again, and they'll take out whatever... If there's litter in the, let's say, like if someone's a candy bar, they'll take that stuff out, because those are...
Okay, Mr. Staley?
Yeah, so obviously, they have hoses that are attached to those trucks, and those hoses basically go down into the raw sewage, and they don't get cleaned out at the site, because it would be on personal property that they would be doing that, so they'd have to do that at this facility. Would you guys be opposed to a water retention system, like they use for car washes right now?
We'd certainly entertain whatever requests you'd like us to explore. Obviously, we don't want anything to be an issue with anyone drinking water.
Oh, I'm sorry, could you please come up and talk to the microphone?
We'll look at whatever you'd like us to look at, and we certainly want to be good neighbors. We were very good neighbors when the family at 186 Larkin asked us about what we were doing and working with them, and we want to be good members of the community.
Sure. And I think, you know, that would be a way of combating that situation, I think, right now, looking at, you know, those units coming in and getting cleaned out, you know, you're definitely going to have some sewage that's going to be seeping into the wetland area, I just can't see how it can't happen.
I mean, again, we walked the site with this wetland superintendent, she understood the use, she saw the units, she saw what they were doing on the site. Her main prerogative with us protecting the wetlands was building a barrier, which we happily agreed to do, and we're going to certainly do whatever she would like us to do to preserve and protect the wetland.
So you wouldn't be opposed, then, again, to a water retention system?
I mean, I would have to sit down with my engineer and see how it would work and talk to my tenants and find out how long it would disrupt their operation, and I would have to factor in how expensive it would be, I would have to look at all of the numbers and the information, of course, but obviously, we'll look at whatever the commission would like us to look at.
Okay, Mr. Staley?
Yes, the, which was mentioned twice now, the water retention, that's a concern of mine. And as Mr. Watson spoke about bacteria and so forth, getting into our water systems, Long Island, the retention system still has to be cleaned. Just can't go into a trench and say, okay, it's in the trench.
There could be a stormwater operations agreement in place in order to show that, when it's going to be cleaned, with the periodic rate of cleaning, what actually to do when there is obstructions or any, anything, any floatables found in the dry wells and things like that.
Okay, so the, my last question on this is, how many units do you clean, how often?
Although, that's more of a question for the owners.
I would say the amount varies based on how busy the season is, but the, there's, their main facility is in Bridgeport, Connecticut, and that's where the majority of the trucks are dumped, and the, most of the waste, that's where the waste is really taken care of, and then this is more of just a holding place for the units, so they can sit there until they're needed in bigger events. For example, the New York City Marathon is coming up, so the yard will be pretty much emptied, all the toilets will be used, and, but that's, so it varies, I would say, my answer is it varies based on how busy they are seasonally.
Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Two comments, and I'll try to, I don't have any more questions. The M S four permit that's asking for you to keep as much rainwater, stormwater on your property as possible, would be for both the A parcel and the B parcel?
Well, that's usually when there's new construction, so any increased impervious areas, driveways, walkways, building areas, roof areas, that all gets, the roof areas get piped, their gutter lines don't just discharge on the ground, that all gets piped on the ground.
I agree, it's not retrofitting unless, unless there are major changes to a site. I think that we are subdividing, you're asking us to subdivide a site, which I think would put you in that category of a major change, you essentially are redefining the limits of the property, that to me would seem like, because the problem is that we have to at some point deal with that problem. At some point, you're going to come to Stratford and say, come and straighten out the flooding on the road of my business, so at some point, we've got to find a way to work together to make this happen. I also think that...
Which is what I plan to discuss with Mr. Casey, the town engineer, to see what water retention we need to install, if any.
And I do know also that current law, from what I've been reading up on this, that current law states that there is nothing precluding making an agreement between multiple property owners for things like water retention areas. If you were to consider the back, the middle acres, the middle acre, somewhere in there, putting in a rainwater retention tank...
In the wetland area?
Not in the wetland, in the middle of the property, somewhere in here.
Right in here?
A giant, huge, holding tank, it could be underground, you could gravel it over, that would collect your rainwater from property A, and would allow you also to use it as a cleaning method for their pump-out station, or their, I'm calling it pump-out, sorry.
Washout station.
Their washout station.
Okay.
Then it would seem to me that you could come to us with a solution for both problems. That would be, I know that's not without money, and our planning administrator could maybe give you some option in terms of state funding for that, but it would seem to me that that would be one way that you could come to us with a solution that would say, this is no longer a problem. And it's something that we could actually advertise, that would be a good solution for Stratford in terms of, you could say, I've helped save two blocks of a roadway from flooding, I think that would be something, I don't know. I know that your goal is to...
What we're doing with the material that we have in a regulated area, which is good gravel material, that can be used for filtration as well, we can actually work with what we already have.
I agree.
We can work with what we already have, install it as a trench bed, reuse it, repurpose it as a trench bed here and have...
Which there is on the existing...
Have some drainage lines coming to it from the washout area.
Right.
And whatever, and the areas that might be pitching...
You could do that across the third of the property with a graded driveway.
And that, those are, and those are things I was planning to discuss with Mr. Casey as well, if he needed any medication. But that could also be a condition of this board as well, if that clears up the stormwater issue.
That would clear up my ideas of stormwater problems, but that's something that I think would be a good move.
Basically using the gravel area that we already have there and placing it on the site so that basically stormwater pitches to it, and potentially connect the trench drain that's in the pad area where the washout station is, and connecting that to the, to the new trench. Yeah, so we can definitely look at all these possibilities.
There are specific guidelines that you'll find under, from the state, exactly how you manage to do polluted water into fresh water into, essentially, back into groundwater, but...
Well, we'll definitely make sure we conform with D E P as well, for sure, yes.
There's a 148-page manual of how to get it done, but I do know that, but... Yeah, very succinct. Chapter 10 is what you need.
Okay, a couple other questions. You have these trailers, what are they used for?
Well, the vehicle trailers here are the ones that store, did I pass out all the pictures on the trailers, that bring in where the containers, the refuse containers come in, not, I'm sorry, not refuse.
Okay, that's for the...
The porta johns. Oh, yeah, here we go, missed this one.
Yeah. I'm talking more about the trailers in back towards Century Drive.
In the back by Century Drive, this is just, this is just equipment that's stored, the materials that are stored for the contractor that leases the area that's right next door. So DPS Services leases a portion of the back area here for parking his heavy equipment, and in that container there, actually, I have a picture of that too. It's always closed, but from what I can tell, it's his, probably machinery, like smaller machinery that he has to keep locked away.
Is that the area marked storage, stockpile area to be covered?
No, that is actually a stockpile of soil that was tarped over as a recommendation by inland wetlands, Miss Christina Vado stated that during, you know, high winds, there's dust that could fly off into the residential properties abutting to the north. So we did show, we did put tarping over that so to minimize that greatly, which is what made the neighbors more satisfied with the, with this application.
And you have a shed that is over the boundary line?
We do. In the course of the survey, unfortunately, these things come to light. Just want to pass out a picture of the, a portion of the tarp area. Yes, so when I, excuse me, looked at the boundary for all of the lots and the subdivision maps on Larkin Drive, I mapped the property line based on their title. And it showed that we are, we are, that line does conform with some of the occupation, which is on the eastward portion, the, that's line is basically right on, and then for whatever reason, it bears out, probably just accommodate the location of the back of that shed, and then it just stops back here. So it is, it's, and it's, a shed is probably a number, you know, it's an injustice for the nice structure that the property owner built there, I'll show you a picture of that as well. He made a very nice, very, very nice storage shed that matches the siding of his home, very, it's very well maintained, and by moving it, it probably would be damaged, which, you know, the Malone brothers will not want to displeased the neighbor by doing that, so they're going to work out an agreement so that they could possibly keep it there legally and on record and filed in the clerk's office.
One question, the picture here...
Yes.
I don't think you see that. Is that the picture you're saying that shows the cover?
That's the tarp area, see the blue tarp on the right?
Back here?
That's some of the stock, exactly, that's some of it, and I didn't capture all of it in that picture, but I just wanted to show that we did tarp it as recommended by inland wetlands.
Go ahead, Mr. Staley, sorry.
Are you going to sell the property around the shed that's lot B?
Well, that's, that, we're, that's still to be determined, we could do that in order to be a good neighbor, or just place an agreement in place stating that the owners will leave it there with the condition that the owner knows it is, agrees it's over the property line, and that he doesn't come back and try to claim it later as adverse possession or something like that. So you can basically file an agreement, a boundary line agreement, in the record, you know, on file like a deed, and just stating that agreement in the terms of the agreement as well, just to keep it in place, because like, because if you move it, it might get damaged, and you know, you put a lot of work into it.
One more question?
Sure, go ahead.
I got a little confused with DPS.
I'm sorry?
What does DPS have to do with...
The abutter to the east here, there's a building here, says existing building.
Right.
And that's the, right above that, there's an address of 105 Century Drive, DPS Services LLC owns this property here, and for just additional yard area, they lease the space directly to the west of them.
So you're going to rent space to them?
They're already, they already do rent space.
They already do?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
So, we have a B property that has three tenants using it?
Two tenants.
Two tenants.
Yeah, you have the DPS Services in the rear here, and see, there's an existing concrete wall, that's kind of like the delineation of rentable, the rentable area. So north of that wall, DPS occupies, and south of the wall...
And that is at the back of their property?
The back of...
Of their existing property. DPS is the property that's on Century, correct? I'm sorry, yeah. So they essentially are just taking, creating a bigger parking lot by leasing.
Using the yard area adjacent to their building, correct, that's correct.
So why aren't we dividing this three times and having them buy that other portion?
You know, I mean, this is the intention of the owners, and this is what they worked out to do, I don't...
Okay, and the porta potty area, which is down in the lower portion, I assume it's using everything below, everything...
The wall line, the property line is actually matching a wall line.
Everything within that non-wetland zone is being used by them?
Correct.
Okay, are they registered to use that land?
Are they, they registered, well, they're, they're abiding by D E P regulations in order to store the porta potty.
Storage permit for that area?
Correct.
Okay.
It's been going on for many years now, right?
Oh.
They're probably twenty years.
Twenty years, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's nothing new, right?
My question is that if we start dividing this land, suddenly, do we have, do we have tenants at will or whatever who no longer have a landlord, since they know if you're going to divide those properties totally separately?
No.
Who is, whose legal status will the business be under?
Sorry, our father passed away tragically last year, and we're really here for my mother, this is her property. She is hoping to get a subdivision so that she can sell the front piece to pay some of the IRS taxes, and then also to, and then keep the back piece so that she can have retirement rental income. That's why we're coming for the subdivision, we want to keep the front tenant, Bobcat, they're a great tenant, we'd love to keep them forever. Stu Graham is the gentleman who owns them, he's a very nice man, but my mom needs to raise funds, so she wants, Stu only wants the first half, so, and he has a right of first refusal to buy it, so he's in a, if we get this subdivision, we would like to be able to sell him the front half and then retain the back, that's the, and all the existing tenants will stay in place, that's the idea.
Can I thank you for that little bit of information, because I've sat here looking at this thing, why would anybody ever want to do this?
And if, if...
I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, no, if Mr. Graham wanted the whole piece, which was my mother's hope originally, that he would take everything, he didn't, he didn't want to do that, and she wants to...
So she's the person that goes back in the 70s deeds and all of that?
Yeah, so she, and so he, so that's why it's a funny, I get completely what you're saying, it's sort of a strange request, and we're not trying to cut off the back and sell that to someone else and then divide this, the middle into four corners like Colorado and Texas and all that.
So my questioning is, how can we make these people that are remaining on this B plot be legal, and also so we don't have to worry about, we need to make sure that they're following environmental regulations?
And my understanding is they have to, right, by law, and...
So I'm just trying to make sure that your mother doesn't get sued two years down the line.
We appreciate that.
With that very notion that suddenly, they're going to come back and say, well, go to the property owner.
No, and we're very sensitive to that, and we understand that it's not a glamorous industry, and, you know, originally, the part of the reason why these gentlemen in the back, what they do is that the neighbors obviously didn't like the fact that they saw these portable toilets, so we said, okay, we'll give you a buffer, let's pull everything back from the fence so that you have, because we understand that it's...
So that was originally the very northern part, was all porta potty?
The one, this one tenant, Royal Flush, had the whole back lot, that's correct.
Okay.
Later on, this group, they have the abutting piece, and they said we would use that, it was empty, or it wasn't empty, but they said we would use that, and we said, okay, or my father, my late father.
I have another question.
Sure.
There is an area here that's gravelled, right within the wetlands, that it's been, it's been, the plan says that it will be removed, and there'll be loan put in there, but if you use the exit coming off of Century, it doesn't look to me like you really have a deep enough radius in there to get the trucks in and out from the upper right-hand corner.
So the thing that's, well, two things, so we can move...
This is flexible as far as this, we can move this wall to accommodate that.
Which would create the turning, the turning area?
Yes, exactly, and the reason we haven't done that yet is because the neighbor next door doesn't really, it's not really an issue for him, because he has this already turning space based on where his building is set back from the street, and we're not, like I said, we're not planning, unfortunately, we don't have the funds right now to do any real development, I'd love to build a four-story building right there and rent it out to... I'd love to build a four-story building right there and rent it out to, you know, a renewable energy company. That would be like the greatest thing you could do. But unfortunately, right now, we couldn't. So if we needed to, we could move this wall, which we're planning on moving anyway when we, we put this protection in for the wetlands to accommodate if trucks are driving in and out. Was there anything else?
No, thank you. I appreciate it very much.
Okay. You also have another area here called Stockpile Storage Area. Will that also be covered? It's.
Which, I'm sorry, which, which part was that?
It's right at the edge of Century Drive. There's, it says guy, I don't know what that is, trailer, and then it says Stockpile Storage Area.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I believe that was not, because it was not adjacent to the residential area in the back, it was not an issue for Wetlands or a recommendation anyway. However, we, that, that also, it's more of a, it's more of a lower stockpile, it's not as high as the back one. But that can also be tarped as well since it's, it's very doable, it's not a problem.
Mr. Watson?
I'm sorry. Why, why are these stockpiles remaining there?
These are, this, this is the use of the abutting contractor. So he sometimes has to stockpile materials for use on his projects. They're heavy, basically a construction excavation company.
So, I'm sorry, are you saying you store excavation material?
I, I believe, I could be.
I think it's dirt. It's just, it's like fill it in dirt, I think.
He, he, he has, he keeps fill here so he can use on, on projects he works on, you know, through his business.
And you're sure that's dirt? It's not concrete? It's not?
Oh, no, I've been, I've been to the site. It's, let me see if I have additional pictures showing, I haven't been near the back. But it's definitely not chunks of concrete or anything like that, or bricks. It's definitely soil.
Okay.
No, I think one of those pictures might show that area.
Just out of curiosity, do you have flood insurance on this entire property?
Sure.
Okay.
Confirmed.
Have you looked at the lot A area to Mr. Watson's question as far as possibly remediating some of the drainage that comes off into the street?
Yes, we could definitely take a look at that. I see there's no, there's no, there are catch basins right at the, at the beginning of the driveway areas there. So we can look at those, see how those are piped and what they're, what, where they're going and how that's being stored. Potentially maybe putting in a trench drain at those, at those aprons, aprons behind the property line to capture the, the drainage from that driveway area. That's, that's, that's something that would be feasible. Right in here, we can, there's usually in the new development, I would show a trench drain anyway, right across here and here, if it's pitched towards the road, to capture that and pipe into either existing drainage on the site or some coal tech units or galleys that, that can be installed.
Mr. Staley?
Yes, I just want, I saw when the pictures came through, they're not all open trailers. There's some container trailers. Is that correct?
The, they're, well, the ones parked here are the open ones on wheels.
Right.
Right? And then these, this one here is a, is a closed one where he, where the contractor next door stores smaller equipment, vehicle parts, probably buckets for his excavating equipment, things like that. And then, and then these other ones are, are also closed as well.
To hold?
Oh, well, for the storage? What type of storage? You guys probably would know more than me because they're all, they're all closed most of the time.
For which of the ones that are D days?
So the, for, for D days, right.
I think he parks like small, like little, like Bobcats, like inside them. I think in one of them, it's like a PTB actually.
And has DPS again?
DP, that's right, DPS, yes. This one over here, adjacent Century Drive, is more of like an office trailer. It's got like a couple steps going up to a platform and then it's, it's more, it's more like an office construction trailer.
Thank you very much for your presentation and for answering all of our questions.
My pleasure. Thank you. Have a good night.
I guess my next bit of business is that I need to, yeah, is asking members of the public to comment in favor or opposition to the petition. I will also allow general comments and observations from those who are neither in favor or opposition to the petition. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Hearing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the petition? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the petition? Is there anyone who is neither in favor nor in opposition but who wishes to provide comments on the petition? Last time, is there anyone who is neither in favor nor in opposition but who wishes to provide comments on the, on the petition? Hearing none, a motion is in order to close. If I can have a motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Vigliotti, second, Mr. Watson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Public hearing is hereby closed. I'd like to take maybe two, three minutes before we start the regular agenda.
There was a motion to close the application, so twenty-one is where, I think what we should do is last the motion, close the public hearing, we close the application.
Oh, last time?
Everything is there.
Okay, missed that. I gotta get something to drink. Yeah, I was just, I was going to ask you that. Let's hope. Okay, where am I? Okay, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission Administrative Session at eight oh three on October sixteenth. I'd like to ask the commissioners if they would consider adjusting the agenda, waive the rules and changing the agenda to take number three zoning referrals out of order, the text amendment change. Mr. Knott has been very nice waiting here, but if, if there's no problem.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Sefton. Mr. Watson, all in favor? Say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? No. Okay. So here we go, Mr. Knott. Sure.
My name is Barry Knott.
We're going to thank you next.
Hey, watch, hang around. Hang around.
Sorry.
Yeah, right. Thank you again. My name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn with offices at sixteen fifty-six Main Street, Stratford. This is the third time I've been here to talk about this zone text amendment. The first time was in August. Had a full-blown public hearing that night. If you recall, I told you I represent the Perkins Family Partnership that owns two new car dealerships, a Subaru in Milford and a Honda in Westport. They're buying this Lincoln Steel Company building. They're going to use the interior of the building to fit, get cars ready for delivery to the new car showroom. They're going to use the balance of the property to store new cars awaiting to be serviced inside the building. So we're talking about no new construction to the building and storage of cars on what is a three-acre parking lot, a three-acre area. What was referred to you originally was a request by me to the zoning commission to delete completely section three point one four zoning regulations and all of the collateral regulations that made reference to three point one four. And we talked about it that night and I explained to you that my justification for making that request was the fact that three point one four, as it relates to inland wetlands, the wetlands are protected by the inland wetlands regulations and the inland wetlands commission of the town of Stratford. And the tidal wetlands are protected by the CAM Act and the erosion sediment control. There was a lot of discussion that night. Tina Bado, our conservation administrator, had written a report in which she was opposed to the zone text amendment and made a comment that the, my appropriate remedy, remedy, excuse me, was to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a variance. We talked about that. And that night, the public hearing was continued until September because we were waiting for further input from Tina as to issues that were raised in our dialogue that night. So come September, the second public hearing occurred and we went through it again. I pointed out to you that the historical background of three point one four, it was originally a flood prevention ordinance and then in nineteen ninety-one, when the inland wetlands commission was created by state statute, or mandated rather, by state statute, the zoning commission changed three point one four from a flood prevention ordinance to a wetland protection ordinance. And unfortunately, unlike the wetlands regulations, unlike the CAM Act, which regulates area in proximity to wetlands, three point one four prohibits activity in proximity to wetlands. Fifty feet as inland wetlands, seventy-five feet as the tidal. Site plan here is surrounded by tidal wetlands on two sides. I think I might have submitted an exhibit that shows about forty percent of the property is unusable if the seventy-five-foot setback from tidal wetlands that is called for by the current section three point one four were to be enforced. And I also explained that due to recent Connecticut Supreme Court case and a line of Supreme Court cases, a person is not entitled to a variance unless they can prove a hardship. The hardship can't be self-created. And if the property has any value whatsoever without the granting of the variance, the Board of Zoning Appeal is not allowed to grant the variance. So here, if we went in for a variance of that seventy-five-foot setback, if the variance were denied, this property would still have some value. It wouldn't be as valuable as it is now, but it would have value and therefore, under a two thousand fifteen Supreme Court case, the board can't grant that variance. So it, it, it's, it's a problem. And I thought that the solution to the problem was the elimination of three point one four altogether. But subsequent to coming to this commission, I went to zoning commission for a public hearing in September. Now, they couldn't act on it because they hadn't.
First sentence of the second paragraph on page two of the DEP letter. Says, "The first text change would prohibit construction within those specified buffer zones." What they're talking about there is the 50-foot setback from inland wetlands. The second part of the proposed change would strike out the prohibition of altering existing contours of land within the identified buffer area. There, they're talking about the 75-foot setback from tidal wetlands. The elimination of this prohibition would allow an individual or entity to bring in as much fill as desired to build up the contours of land parcels within these buffer areas without any restrictions. That is absurd. That is not true. Why? Because the inland wetlands commission isn't going to let us do that as to inland wetlands, and the zoning commission isn't going to let us do that as to any areas that are subject to the CAM Act and the Erosion and Sediment Control Regulation. So, that blatant statement is completely untrue, all right? The proposed zoning amendment would have the potential for significant impacts on coastal resources throughout the community. Modifying 3.14 as proposed would make it extremely difficult for the community to regulate the placement of fill in these buffers. Wrong, wrong, wrong. The CAM Act jurisdiction that the zoning commission has allows the zoning commission to look at every aspect of whatever site plan we propose. And then finally, on the last page of this exhibit, Mr. Thompson talks about applying for a variance. Well, maybe the applicant can go to the Board of Zoning Appeals if he's got a hardship and seek a variance from this regulation. Variances can't be self-created. They cannot be financial, and you've got to have a hardship. And the hardship can't be self-created. Our engineers designed this plan. How can I go into the Board of Zoning Appeals and say, "I got a hardship," when my engineer designed the plan that requires the variance? I don't have a hardship. And even if the board granted the variance, under the ENF case, because that came down in 2015 versus Fairfield, as long as the property had value, if the variance is denied, the board can't grant the variance. Well, apparently, Mr. Thompson is not familiar with that case. So, this letter is wrong in so many ways. Now, the one thing that he does say, which is correct, I've highlighted in yellow, and that's the first sentence of the second paragraph on the last page. "Please be advised that this consistency determination was based on coastal management considerations only and does not necessarily reflect other municipal planning and zoning considerations that may apply." What he's saying to you is, "This is my job to write reports telling you about the CAM Act. But you, as the Planning Commission, and the Zoning Commission, as the Zoning Commission, and the Inland Wetlands Commission, as the Inland Wetlands Commission, are the ones that ultimately have to decide what's in the best interest of the town of Stratford, not the guy sitting in Hartford. He writes a recommendation. You're obligated to be aware of it, but you don't have to follow it. You don't have to agree with it. And certainly, in this case, I suggest to you that you shouldn't agree with it because it's wrong on so many levels." So, listen. I have now modified this text amendment as simply as I possibly can to allow this project to go forward. As I said earlier, at the Zoning Commission, when we had our public hearing, there was no opposition. There were no neighbors with signs, and I did not leave that meeting with arrows in my back from disgruntled neighbors, as I often do when there's a controversial petition. But this is a benign application, and it's been designed in a way that's got galleys. It's got drainage. Casey satisfied. We've answered all of Tina's concerns, and I think it deserves favorable consideration. And I said I was going to be brief, and I wasn't, and I'm sorry. But this one's got me worked up.
I think we can tell that. Thank you very much, Mr. Knott. Are there any questions? I know that this has been before us for a few months, so I don't know if there's any questions that we might have. One thing I would like to point out, that this is not an approval or disapproval of that particular project. We are talking strictly about the text amendment. Okay? And therefore, the text amendment would not only affect this property, but the entire town. So, you know, you're not voting on the Lincoln property at this point, okay? Any comments? Any questions? Mr. Watson, I could see your finger.
I just want to make one comment that I appreciate all that Mr. Knott has done on this. The one comment is, I haven't always liked everything that has come down from the DEP. But one thing that this does say is that there is still some local rule. That as a Planning and Zoning Commission, we still have the right to say how much of these regulations we want. We can't do less, but if we want to have stricter regulations, we can do that. Seeing as how we are a coastal city, that all you've got to do is look at the panhandle. These issues are becoming more real as we go on, and I will vote for the future in terms of whether we keep our regulations or reduce them.
Do I hear a recommendation to the Zoning Commission?
I move that we send this with an unfavorable, recognizing that planning has valid input in determining our land uses.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Vigliotti. Any further discussion? Mr. Seft.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Bantsky on this. What are your feelings on this, Jay?
I think the longer that this application has hovered over all of our, on all of our agendas, the less I like it. You know, I think one of the first things that I said when we talked about this the first time around was, you know, the town has its own right to value their coastal resources and the protection of those resources in the opposition of economic development. You know, coastal resources, they're their own form of economic development for the services, you know, on the recreation, to the buffer that they provide. So, you know, I think that, given the comments that we've received from DEP, the hesitation that we've received from the Conservation Administrator, and what I value, how I value the coastal resources, I think the town is certainly within its right, and I would support that right, to prohibit any activity within the 50-foot buffer or the 75-foot buffer. So, that's how I feel.
And what impact do you think this would have on future developments in town?
Well, it's hard to say. I think as proposed now, there's certainly a possibility that you're going to see paved parking lots within 50 foot of an inland wetland or 75 feet of a tidal wetland. You know, that's certainly better than a paved surface. But, you know, we try to look at the ramifications of our decisions. Okay, this site, it's got brand-new cars on it. We're permitting that this site to be in a light industrial zone, to have this use. There may be minimal to no environmental impact necessarily on this site, but, like I said, we are now potentially opening the door to a bus storage facility where there is leaking oil, and that is going down through the, into the impervious surface, into the gravel parking lot. It's hard to predict everything that, you know, no one regulation fits the town perfectly. So, again, it's hard to predict what ramifications it would have, but given the amount of coastal area that we have in the town, I mean, it's the entire town, other than the western portion and the northern portion. That's where my hesitancy really, really sits with this.
Mr. Watson.
And also, I just want to take us back to the POCD, because the POCD says that we should be planning on building properties that reflect the vision that we have for that area. That area is intended to essentially be upgraded as we go through the years. My question, Jay, is that, is that a buildable plot under the POCD vision where it recommends that all parking be moved to the lower two floors and the top two to four floors be used as commercial or industrial space or whatever? Could you put something on stilts there and have it meet our current zoning, our current 3.14?
Are you talking about a parking structure?
I'm talking about a building that has a parking structure built into it, which is what the POCD is asking, that we have only ground floor use, limited ground floor use and parking on the floor above it, that we prevent parking lots that are going to get flooded every time we get a major storm. Is there enough land? If we follow our current zoning of pushing buildings to the front of the road line, will that give us still the 50 to 75 feet wetland area? Can we wedge into the property as it exists something on piers like the building that's on excess road?
Sure.
Could we fit something in there commercially so that we could say to owners, "No, your property is not worthless. These are the kind of buildings that our current zoning permits"?
Sure. I mean, I would even go as far as to say that the current use could go in without any text amendment at all. Maybe not to the exact intensity that, the amount of vehicles maybe that they want to store, and maybe that doesn't make the economic formula work for the landowner or the purchaser, but it doesn't render the property valuable.
Well, that's the real question. That's really what I wanted, what I wanted to get across.
For my opinion.
That's the point that I wanted to get across. The cost of doing business might be more expensive, but so is the cost that it's going to create for Stratford. Because the more that we allow these properties, the less we have properties that will draw tourists, the more we're going to have remediation problems all around those properties as we start dealing with increased water levels and everything else. Thank you. I don't want to drag this out. I appreciate what Mr. Knott has done, because he has certainly been a warrior for his cause. My motion stands.
Okay. So, the motion we have before us, if there's no further discussion, is to send this to the Zoning Commission with an unfavorable recommendation. And Mr. Vigliotti seconded. So, let's call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? One. Okay. So, it will go on four to one with an unfavorable recommendation to the Zoning Commission. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Knott, for hanging in there with us.
I agree with that.
Okay. Now, and we can thank you very much to our, the Malone family regarding the subdivision. We can now work on that. Can I have a motion to take it off the table?
So moved.
Mr. Seft, second. Mr. Vigliotti, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Okay. So, it's off the table. Now, we can move forward with discussion and make it a, to lead to a motion to either send on to zoning, no, not to zoning, this doesn't go to zoning, to make a recommendation to accept the subdivision, basically. I think that's where we're at. Okay. Anybody? Mr. Watson.
My honest feeling is that we could come up with a short list of what we think are some of the problem areas and could get us to where we could come up with a favorable vote, which I would love to see, because I would love to see the family walk away pleased. I'd love to find a solution for them, but I think there are some real, serious problems that we need to, if we're going to vote on this tonight, that we need to include as part of requirements that we would want addressed in order for this to, in order for me to vote favorably. The major thing that I would want to see is the water, how water is handled on the site, water and potential pollution sources. Those, to me, are two of the major things that I would want to see, some kind of stipulation applied. I won't be the only one. I'll stop there.
No, I think we talked about water retention, you know, at those, you know, when they're doing the washing. And obviously, you know, with this being done for the last 20 years and that particular piece of property, as Mr. Watson stated, we don't want to see any more family hardship on their end of it. But also in talking with the Conservation Administrator, she seems to be in favor of moving forward with the project, and I think based on some of these conclusions and some of these recommendations, we can move forward with some additional recommendations.
If I could go back to the water retention, I think there's two components to that. There's water retention from the current industrial uses of washing porta-potties and vehicles, that that water needs to be contained so that it can run off in a less polluted fashion. We might need to say that we need to see some kind of a report on, is it currently a source of pollution that we have not been keeping an eye on? But that, to me, isn't as important as saying that we could do something about it retroactively here by taking some kind of a step. It would seem to me that we'd still get ourselves further ahead. The other portion, though, that I don't want to let go of is that the A property, the runoff of rainwater in that area needs to be addressed. And I think the case can be made that subdividing a property is substantial, that that is more than just a renovation, that we could actually say, "This requires you to meet our current July 2017 standards" in order to make that happen. And I think it's doable. There's certainly the acreage around there to do it. I think that if they were to do that before they split the property, then it's really only a matter of saying, "Will we give a right of way for both property owners for this thing?" And it could be easily done. If we're currently talking about doing it for existing piping in the area, then it seems to me that that absolutely could be done. So, that's one A and B, as far as I can see it, in terms of what we could stipulate in terms of a positive agreement. The other thing that I think, I'm looking at the area in terms of our POCD, what we're looking for in the future in terms of upgrading the area's use and the visibility of the area. I think that we need to, say, clean up that back lot. The front lot is perfectly fine. It's an attractive business that I would like, I like seeing in Stratford. It belongs here. The back property looks like something that you might see in the hills of Tennessee. And I think we should say it's important that you clean up what's back there, make it, get rid of some of the junk that's back there. Maybe we don't want 40-foot tractor trailers as storage vehicles. Maybe we want a fence all the way around the whole site that will be a six-foot stockade in that area. Maybe we want more greenery along, not just Century, but on the opposite side, which has some visibility from the other road. I think that we ought to say that now, because essentially, we have no idea what's going to happen to the property in the future. But now, we're asking to subdivide it, and it would seem to me that we should correct as many conditions as we can when we do the subdivision, so that whoever takes that property in the future will have a much cleaner property, that we will have done our job to make sure that we've delivered them the best possible. So, that's, those are the two things that I would really say. There are other points that I could make, but I think those are the really, the critical ones that I think would make real sense.
I agree with the water retention. Something has to be addressed there. And I'm also concerned, after the subdivision, what is grandfathered? Contaminated soil? I don't know. But if they've been washing vehicles there for 20 years, DPC or S, what's the soil like? Were there any cores asked to be taken and checked?
I was just saying that, sorry, I forgot the microphone. The chairman was asking if that's something that the Planning Commission could require. I think that as a condition of approval, you can have the, you could require the applicant to have testing done on site, done by the Health Department or a third party. But I'm not sure. I think that the subdivision is somewhat separate from that, other than, you know, bringing to light what's currently on the property.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hi. This is my second day on the job, so forgive me if I'm already asking you a question that's already in there. So, I saw the landscaping standards for the MA Zone, and it requires for environmentally contaminated properties, you should have at least three shrubs for every 10 parking spaces. And a lot of the concerns on flooding could be addressed if you had more greening and more shrubs and landscape material on the site. And it is also aesthetically, you know, very pleasing, and there's more natural infiltration. So, have you ever considered, like, you know, going through the landscaping standards and seeing if you can address any of those?
I'm sorry if you can't speak through the session, but this is...
Unless I say you can, you can.
I wasn't sure about what was allowed to say anything. So, I'm sorry, it was a couple of things.
I'm sorry, the hearing was closed, and I completely forgot, but I just wanted to know if the landscaping standards were addressed in the site plan.
The landscaping standards, I think by showing that we meet the impervious area maximum and the landscaping minimum, we're calling the wetlands is a huge landscaping portion of the property. And we're trying to enhance that by abiding by the inland wetland requirements on the permit that I handed in earlier. So, you know, but as far as like, is there like perimeter landscaping or any of that that you're referring to?
I was looking at the standards in the ordinance, 12.12.7 is for environmentally contaminated properties, and 12.12 is in general landscaping requirements for parking lots. I know that subdivisions aren't, don't have to address this, but if you really want to make sure that there is more water infiltration, maybe that's a method to look at. And another thing is, I wanted to just raise a concern on the, you know, accessory structures on the lot. What would happen if there's a high-wind event and a high-flooding event? Would there be off-site storage of these so that they don't get washed away and, you know, impact the neighbors' properties is what I was concerned about.
Okay. So, in reference to the landscaping within the parking areas, I made sure that the property line on the easterly side of Lot A has a five-foot minimum for the perimeter landscaping for parking lots, abutting property line. So, it actually, there's that strip of lawn has that, that existing, it's already existing, meets that requirement on perimeter landscaping. And I'm sorry, in reference to accessory structures, the question was?
I can't talk to you directly. Sorry. This is a process.
Be my guest. Go ahead. Be my guest.
Okay. All right, then. I was just talking about the accessory structures, off-site storage of accessory structures in terms of high-wind or flooding event.
A high-wind or flooding, okay.
What do you do? Because these are, you know, there's susceptible to damage and flooding.
Yeah, I can understand that. In the past 15 or 20 years, have we had any flooding on the property? There is flood insurance.
There's flood, oh, we're in a flood plain.
We are in a flood plain, so, you know, technically, we have insurance for flood, you know, for flood purposes. But, you know, to prevent, you know, the materials from floating away, that I think in the flood event, all the properties would be, would have floatables, you know, coming, you know, in and out of their properties. But are they measures for flood control right now? No, if that's the question.
And I'll just add to the town planner's point, that although the subdivision is going to require additional landscaping for parking lots or the separation, it's certainly within the commission's purview to want to require additional screening from property, between properties or around the perimeter.
Mr. Watson.
That's what I want to talk about, the existing building, the A building. There actually is a whole row of trees that have been planted in. That actually looks really nice. That area has been re-landscaped within the last five years, from what I can see. What I would be more concerned about is, there is a woodland area all the way at the back of the property that connects with those two wetlands. And the combination of wetland and woodland is the most critical acreage that should be protected. So, if anything, I would say that we should put some kind of statement valuing the woodland in that part of there as much as the wetlands, connect those two together and say that any development in this area needs to be protective, which is what you have already. It's not like we're asking you anything different. And at the same time, that becomes the screening for the property that's directly behind it, all the residential properties. I would think that all except for this corner where you have the dirt pile, that could be one area where you could actually put screening in to protect the residences, because there's three or four, five residences behind there who could actually be helped by some kind of screening. The other side is abutting another commercial property, and the other side is abutting commercial property and Century. So, there is no, nothing's going to get helped by anything there. But it would seem to me that an acknowledgement, maybe some kind of a, I don't know, tying those two wetlands with the existing natural forest, because it seems to be that that is natural forest, wetland, wetland forest, which is different than any other kind of forest. It actually would do a lot of water absorption. It will, if there's a quarter acre up there, a half acre up there of forest, it will essentially take in enough water for another quarter acre, another half acre of whatever, if we get four inches of rain, it will take that up without... whatever, if we get four inches of rain, it will take that up without any flooding in that area. So I think we should say something about protecting that area.
Okay. Mr. Staley?
I'm still stuck on the, the wash station. The, I've, I've installed two of them in Stratford. And the requirements are, there's quite a few requirements. These are actual, you have to have tanks now, in-ground, and separators, so, and have trucks come and pump them out, the salads, and be hooked to a sanitary system. I've done this, and I don't understand how you just let something go into a trench, an area. I mean, that's not the code. Or do we have to follow the code?
I, I'm not sure what the code is. If there is a code to it, I'm sure we have to follow it. But we certainly can put that in as a stipulation, that the code has to be followed, and that they have to look at ways of controlling the, the water retention, which I think we've already talked about doing, so.
We did. And I think there's some least expensive ways to do that. I know in dealing, actually, my college roommate is, owns TransClean, and they, they clean trucks all the time. But there's also a tarp that they can put underneath these vehicles that collects the water, that can get pumped back into a truck and then deposited at a, at a treatment area. So there are some, there are some things that are cost-effective.
I think we can require that they must find a way to take care of the water retention, but they can determine how they do it.
Sure.
And, and I think as a way to protect the approval, if that's what the commission wants to do, you, you could require as a condition of approval that a wastewater detention system be designed and approved by the town engineer, the conservation administrator, and the Health Department. Since they're the ones who really, I believe, would be handling, ensuring that the water is being properly treated and disposed of. And approved by the town engineer, conservation administrator, and Health Department. Town engineer, conservation, and health.
Would you add to the July seventeen standards? Because is that what we're talking about?
No, these would be two separate things.
If we currently have drains here that are running into our stormwater system?
I think, I think it's, you know, as long as the condition is rationally tied to the development, which I think what you're, you're asking is, can you require that the site meet the MS four stormwater permit the town holds? I, I do think you can. As long as there's a rational nexus between the two, and I believe that there is.
Okay, any other comments, stipulations?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think we're all cognizant of the fact that some of these recommendations could be quite costly for the applicant. And I think that we're probably doing this, obviously, in the best interest of the town, but also in the best interest of the applicant also. So I think these are, are good solutions to some of the issues that they have. And I, not that we're trying to create any more hardship on them, because we understand the family situation, but I think some of these issues need to be addressed, and I think in the long run, it will help them down the road. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. Mr. Watson?
That's my final comment, because essentially, we would be helping to set up a very sellable property. We'd be clearing it of, of its major violations. We would essentially, it would be permitted under current standards, so that it would be much easier, it would be well-defined as to what's buildable and what's not buildable. So I think, we, we could go on with a million of the things that we don't like about it, but I think we would deliver something that would still be very much leasable, they'd still get income off it, and yet, we also would move forward a little bit further with 21st Century standards that we're trying to, to get things up to.
Any other comments or questions? I do have at least one. Since we found out tonight that there are actually two entities, companies, using the Lot B area, I believe we should receive a letter from the zoning enforcement officer informing us whether that is legal per our zoning regulations, and that whatever rectification, what has to be fixed, should be fixed before the actual approval of the subdivision is officially approved. Because I think, as Jay pointed out, we have a little bit of a, an issue. Yes, sure.
Your regulation twenty point two point two point five on public health and safety talks about refused and recycling areas, and it does mention that the drainage collection system shall be designed in accordance with the requirements of Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual. And in addition to best management practices currently available, in the absence of specific design criteria which may not be identified, the applicant shall at a minimum, design the stormwater collection system to retain the first inch of runoff on-site, and provide a zero increase in the peak rate of runoff from the site for the twenty-five-year storm. So it clearly mentions that if you're proposing anything that would require wastewater treatment on-site, they would have to abide by the zoning regulation, which will automatically be deferred, you know, for a zoning permit or something.
Okay. What's the zoning regulation number?
Twenty point two point two point five.
Twenty point two point two point five.
Yeah.
Because I'm not going to read that whole thing. Okay, any other, did I get that correct on the zoning enforcement?
You did, and I was taking notes, but I, if, if the board was feeling that they were moving to make a motion and a vote this evening, I think that if there is an issue with the, a number of tenants on the site, and I think that there might be, that, that can be resolved post-approval. I, I think that it just, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure that that affects the subdivision itself. However, that's, that's the board's prerogative to wait. I certainly would respect that decision.
But we can include that with, with our, our, if we were to say, if we were to vote on this tonight, we could include that as one of the requirements, that they get a favorable from the zoning enforcement officer.
Yeah.
And, and correct any, anything that's found on their part.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I, I, I took notes, but I'm going to try this, okay?
Well, the other, just a suggestion, maybe you could start off by saying we're going to approve or disapprove.
I need to know that.
And then we'll start listing all the stipulations, just to give you a hand.
Should we, should we do a test vote to see? Okay. In reference to eight twenty-one Woodin Road Lots A and B subdivision petition of William Malone, seeking a two-lot subdivision and site plan review in an MA Zone. Take a leap here. We're, planning, I should put the vote? Would give a favorable? Okay. Based on the following recommendation, based on completion of the following recommendations, we, we give a favorable. We give an approval, okay. So these are, these are his, right? Okay, let's see. Oh, you know, right, there are, actually here, okay? A lot of them are. So I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to read these, and then I'm going to hand you, I'm going to read these, and I'm going to hand you the paper. And then I'm going to give you one or two other additional ones. Who is this from? Based on the recommendations of Jay Vansky in the September sixth document for eight twenty-one Woodin, with the addition of- Oh, she does? You have it? With the addition of four additional points. That a water retention plan be developed for both properties that will protect existing wetlands, and also meet the requirements of the, Ms. Tavaski, for MS four requirements for stormwater management on the property. Is that correct? Okay. The next item that we would include would be a pollution soil analysis study that would determine specifically the wastewater designed, the wastewater system designed for the, a wastewater system designed for the existing porta-potty and truck cleaning facility that meets standards of MS four. No. Because what we want specifically is the existing wastewater that is created by the current porta-potty and truck cleaning operation.
A, a water retention treatment system shall be designed, installed around the existing washing station, and approved by the town engineer, Health Department, and Conservation Administrator.
That sounds great. No. And that will make it MS four, right?
That would be something separate.
Okay, forget it, okay. Oh, you're right, because it doesn't go anywhere. You're right, okay. We also, how can this be worded? Protect wooded area, wooded wetland area, or the- Protect- Existing wooded wetland areas.
No disturbance should be promoted on the-
Permanent, I mean, we're not just saying during construction, we're actually saying to conserve that area. With additional screenings in the upper right-hand corner of the existing property to protect, that's all part of that one, to protect a view shed of residents in that area. There are five houses along there.
With additional landscaping along where?
I, I'm saying the upper right, it's like the northeastern corner of the property. It's where they're putting in the gravel for the truck, the DZ Company. And the next one is, we need, all of this is dependent upon a favorable response from the zoning enforcement officer regarding the legal status of the two businesses. That's what I said, this is separate. This is the separate point, that we need zoning enforcement officer to sign off regarding the legal status of the two businesses that are currently leasing property, quotes, parcel B. Does that make sense? Did I get everything? You certainly may, you're the boss. I think that makes great sense. Oh, this is yours. Thank you. Thank you for lending it to me. Can we ask?
Right, okay, so we have a motion, a very long motion, but a motion, can I have a second to that emotion, that motion?
Do we need him to read it, or?
Do you want us to read it again?
I think we're-
Pretty clear on?
Yeah.
Yes, you seconding it? Thank you, Mr. Staley. Moving right along, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No one's opposed, so it passes unanimously. Thank you for being patient with us. I know there's a lot of stipulations there, but I think in the long run, it will actually serve you well. So good luck with your plans. Good night.
Send your best to your mom.
Okay. Something I, I didn't do at the very beginning, because we went a little off, we have a new town planner. So I'm going to ask Jay to introduce her, and maybe you can tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure, well, I'll keep it short, and I'll let Sussmita do the talking. We're very lucky to have secured our new town planner in Sussmita Atota. She's the former plant, Assistant Planning Director for City of New Haven. She has a background in architectural design, specialties in resiliency, CRS, and many, many other things, but we're really excited to have her here, and as she has already found out in the first two days, that has a lot, we've got a lot of work. So we're excited to have her here, and I'll just add that this commission, along with a lot of the other land use boards, but particularly this one, was instrumental in helping to secure the funding for your position.
That's awesome, thank you, I love you all.
We really wanted you here, so welcome.
Hi, thank you once again for securing funding for my position. I've always wanted to work in Stratford, because I live very, very close, I live in Milford. I've been eyeing this position for a long, long time, and I'm glad I got it. I am a certified urban planner, I have fifteen years of experience in the field of planning, and I have independently worked on, and on various projects, and also worked as part of teams, so I know the dynamic of working independently, as well as working as part of a team. Most recent accomplishments, like Jay said, I was instrumental in preparing New Haven's Plan of Conservation and Development, which was unanimously approved by the Board of Alders there. Then I also worked on a lot of complete streets manual preparation, and community rating system program entry at the highest rating in the state for New Haven, they got class seven. Most recently, the past one year, I've been working independently as a consultant for cities of Bridgeport and Milford, and I've been helping Milford with the CRS program, and working on an open agriculture master plan for Bridgeport. So what brings me here, I think there's a lot of opportunity here. My children play in the Sharp Beach, they go play soccer there. Like I said to Jay, our family regularly goes to the Hindu temple on Chapel Street. We have strong ties to Stratford, even though we live in Milford. And having worked in a dense urban environment with a diverse population base in New Haven, I couldn't have imagined working somewhere suburban, where the diversity is less. And Stratford is very well-positioned between Bridgeport and Stamford. And like I was telling Jay, that Bridgeport is now attracting a lot of investments, which may mean that, you know, most of the people who were born and moved to Bridgeport would look at alternate options for, you know, a quieter living, and maybe the next available best option could be Stratford. So I think there's a lot of opportunity for us all to- So I think there's a lot of opportunity for us all to work on this.
Well, welcome to the team. Anybody have any questions? Any comments? Otherwise?
Thank you. Thank you all. And I'm sorry, in New Haven, we don't close the public hearing. We vote on every item and then we move forward, and the staff advises, and I just completely forgot. I just jumped in.
That's okay. We're learning too, so.
Yeah, but we could be sued by lawyers, so we should be very, very careful.
Jay keeps us out of trouble. Actually, Gail does too, so. We're safe. Dino? Yes, we... As elected officials, yes, we are. So, moving right along.
Yeah, my email address. Jay, what is my email?
First initial, last name.
Okay, it is S.A.T.T.O.T.A.
That's close.
Yeah, and I don't know the address. At Town of Stratford. At TownofStratford.com. At TownofStratford.com.
So S.A.T.T.O.T.A. at TownofStratford.com. Okay, we were going to have a presentation from our town engineer and conservation administrator, but the town engineer had a little emergency, so hopefully we'll get them back to discuss the MS four stormwater permit, but Jay, do you want to give us a... Have we been... We've been issued it?
Yep, since July of last year. There's a core team members, core team of the conservation administrator, the town engineer, myself, and now the town planner, who are essentially making sure that the town is tracking all the necessary requirements required by DEEP to make sure that our permit remains valid regarding maintenance of catch base, maintenance of our tributaries here in town, soil erosion and sediment control measures are being taken. There's a long, long list of things that we need to document. So essentially, it's the team of the three of us. Now the team of the... Now it'll be four of us working. We meet quarterly, and we all have our items that we're kind of focusing on. So we had a meeting a week and a half ago, and I was actually... I had to attend to something, an emergency, so I couldn't come. So we rescheduled the meeting for in the next few weeks. We're still trying to nail down a date. But I'd spoken with conservation administrator and John Casey. They were both going to come tonight, but I didn't want to have just one of them here. I think it was best to have the entire group. So if we can... They all agreed to come November twentieth. I believe that's our next... Let me double check. That's our next meeting, unless we don't have anybody... Any folks here, or we decided not to have a meet. We could... They said they'd be happy to do December as well, so they're ready to come. They're happy to do so.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Watson?
Stupid question. I've been searching, trying to find where, if there are any specific documents that I can read up on.
May I send you our stormwater permit?
Yeah.
All right.
How many pages? Hundred and twenty-seven, right?
Just like we're doing for you.
Okay, and another... Yeah, if you send it... Seriously, I'll send it as PDF. My other question. Is this permit... Does it interact with coastal resiliency? The whole move that we have going of welding down our sewer covers and all of that? Will eventually all of that be coordinated together? Or am I making too big a leap?
And I'll let the town planner also chime in. I'll give my opinion on it. Now, I think anytime you're trying to mitigate stormwater flooding and better improve the stormwater management system for the town, that is improving the town's resiliency by reducing neighborhood flooding and better positioning those neighborhoods, you know? And I say it every time when we talk about a planning initiative. The planning initiative, just like MS four, on its own, does nothing. It's... The important thing is that they're running concurrent and supporting other plan... Long-range planning initiatives like the town's resiliency plan, the MS four, Complete Streets. You know, they're all working in concert with one another, so... Different. They're never... MS four and resiliency are never going to be two merged projects, but they complement one another.
MS four is a requirement by the state, but your resiliency plan is your vision from your residents and the constituents, and that's a technical requirement, whereas this is more in the best interest of the residents and what they would like to see in their neighborhoods. So both don't have to be competing. They're actually complementary.
Mr. Staley.
Did I hear you say welding the catch basin tops?
Yeah, it's part of what we need to do for coastal resiliency. Part of the problem is that when we have flooding...
How do we clean them?
It literally pops up, and then we end up with seawater running into, overwhelming our... If... This assumes that they're connected still into our sewer system, which Stratford doesn't have that problem, because our... It's a very small problem. But essentially, what happens is that we overwhelm our own systems by them popping off and everything that's... All the floodwater is going into there, and you end up... So the... What they're doing now in all coastal areas is essentially welding them down. We're finding a way to, you know, bolt them down so they don't pop off, and it prevents that from happening.
Yeah, because it would be a costly thing every time we clean them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it is a costly thing, but...
Undo the weld and re-weld.
It's absolutely necessary in areas that flood regularly.
Thank you.
That's only what I've been reading. I don't know.
Okay, then we can move on to approval of minutes from September eighteenth, 2018, which I believe you all received. Have a motion to approve?
I approve. We... I move to approve the minutes from whatever it was, September eighteenth.
Seconded by Mr. Staley. Any discussion? Amendments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No, that's passed unanimously. We did three... Okay, four. Campsite plan review for subdivision that we already approved.
So I would just recommend that the board approve the coastal area management, coastal site plan review, and I would encourage that... Generally, we like to lean on DEEP's comments and refer to those, any recommendations. They didn't give us any feedback on this particular application. So what I would do is lean on the conditions of approval that were stipulated for the subdivision. I would just reiterate those. And not by repeating them all. I'm sorry. Not by repeating them all, just saying the same conditions apply.
We need a motion. Mr. Watson?
In terms of CAM, I move that the same conditions apply as our vote tonight for eight twenty-one Woodend Road. Is that good enough?
Okay. Is that okay? Okay, can I have a second? Mr. Vigliotti, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, anybody opposed? No, okay. That was a aye. Okay, we haven't... No eight twenty-four reviews?
No.
Okay, discussion of the town plan of conservation and development. Is there any update on the architectural review board?
Well, we've had two meetings. We met last Thursday, and the board is... We're essentially starting from scratch, so we're setting up procedures on how applications are going to be referred to the architectural review board, the timing, where those meetings need to be placed during the month so that we're not holding up any applications unless, you know, there's some major issue. Coming up with... Potentially coming up with, and this is a long-range plan, coming up with corridor or neighborhood design, specific design criteria and standards, which I know is something the planning chairman has mentioned many times. Without going too far into it, the goal is to hopefully develop some initial design criteria and eventually adopt those criteria into the zoning regulations. And I would anticipate those come before us at any... You know, at some point before they go... Before they go anywhere.
Any questions regarding the...
How many people you have on that board, Jay?
We have five.
Five. Are they architects?
There are... We have four architects and one geologist. The geologist was a planning commissioner, John Zabel, who had a significant... It was before I was here, but a significant role in the POCD.
And who are the architects?
We have Shannon Hovan from Antonazi. We have Tom Sharkwitz from... Oh, my gosh, I'm not going to remember the firms they worked for in Greenwich. We have Jamie Millward, who is a design builder, architect, and developer. And we have Tom Law, who is also a design and architect in Norwalk. I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the name of their firms, but...
Tom or Steve? Is it Tom Law?
Did I say Tom? I meant to say Steve Law.
Yeah, he's from town. Yep.
All Stratford residents.
Yeah.
And an excellent group of folks, very, very qualified, and I'm happy that they'll eventually be there commenting on design aesthetics so that I don't have to try to embarrass myself any further.
Any other questions?
And they're doing this town-wide for new construction, correct?
Correct.
Are they limiting themselves initially? Are they going to say just the Todd or just the main travel corridors or?
Town-wide, the criteria is commercial construction.
It's commercial.
So I have to do a little bit of research on at what point, and I'm pretty sure it's three residential units or more are classified as a commercial construction. Just because someone's building a three-family or a four-family doesn't mean that they're necessarily going to do a review on it. They may say, no, you know, this is not the scale that we're looking at. You know, we're looking at stuff that's a little larger. So our anticipation is that it's going to be any new... Any new commercial construction, including residential.
Will it include adaptive reuse?
Yes.
So any of our building... Any of our industrial buildings, any of our large buildings, that will fall into there?
Absolutely.
Because that's something that is a great asset.
Yeah, that architectural preservation, I know, that speaks right to the heart of all the folks on that commission.
Good.
On that board, we've spoken about that at length.
Great. Anything else on the plan of conservation and development that you want to bring up at this point?
No, not at the moment.
Okay, moving right along. Discussion of section five point three of the zoning regulations. Did we get the report from the intern?
That's not what this report is actually referring to. We... Unfortunately, our intern has gone AWOL. We haven't heard from her. I followed up with her after she didn't come to the last meeting with her map of the distribution of residential housing, residence apartments throughout town. So, you know, it's something that we can pick up, and now that we have the town planner here, this is something that she's more than well-suited to be able to maybe map that, and that's... I can discuss that with her at the, you know, offline. I think it's also going to be important for me to discuss section five point three in the bedroom equivalency cap with the new town planner. This is her second day, and, you know, we've all been working on this for a few years, and it's even hard to kind of wrap our brains around, so we'll have that discussion at length as well.
Okay, very good. Erosion and sediment control plan?
Nothing new.
Bond release?
No new requests.
Implementation plans for the Greenway project?
So I can give a couple of quick updates. The Greenway meeting, the Greenway committee, I'm sorry, met, I believe it was last week, and they'd asked me to come to the meeting and just give an update about the Complete Streets and how we're hoping that the two projects are going to be connecting from the existing Greenway down by the animal control facility. And the next leg essentially is being designed from the water pollution control area north, along Bird's Eye, north along Main Street, and then towards West Broad. I talked about how we're... The plan is to integrate the Greenway with the existing Complete Streets network and essentially get almost double the Greenway length without even intentionally doing so by linking the two plans together. Before I move on, I mean, the Greenway and Complete Streets, those are somewhat simultaneous, so I'll... If anyone has any questions about Greenway.
The only comment I have is I don't think Mr. Watson knew about the meeting, and he's our liaison.
Well, I was invited to the meeting. I'm not on the committee, so I would recommend that maybe someone from the committee reach out, or Linda Peppin, I believe, is the chairman of that committee, maybe...
Well, all right, we've... She's looking for the next date.
When you find it.
Yeah. Could we have Mr. Watson added to the list? Or I'll talk to the town or the council clerk, because you should be receiving notification.
Here?
And Commissioner Watson, you can also feel free to reach out to me and remind me that you're interested in attending those meetings, and I can see if I can help try to facilitate that, getting you on the regular invite list.
I thought we had this discussion in your office.
I keep being asked to post stuff about Greenway events on my Facebook, Complete Streets and Greenway site by some of the people that are on the committee, so I really would love to be able to...
And now that we see that they are meeting, because they haven't been meeting for a while. Yeah, so now that we know that it looks like they're meeting, we have a couple of people who have expressed interest on being on the Greenway committee, so I'll make sure that gets taken care of at our next meeting or so. Anything on Complete Streets? Do you want to go on to that?
Sure. So we are in the final negotiations with our preferred consultant that'll be doing all the engineered design. We've agreed on a final price. The final price is within our budget, so we're very excited about that. And we were able to get them down to budget, our budget price, without reducing any of the scope on any of the projects, so... You know, big win for the town, and, you know, once the news is final and the contracts are signed, I'll be able to update you who that firm is, so we're excited that this is going to be moving forward pretty quickly soon.
Okay, coastal resiliency plan?
Yep, so we had our final CRS visit with the ISO specialist hired by FEMA, and they gave us... This was on September twenty-sixth. They had given us thirty days to kind of wrap up some additional information, some things that we were... That needed to be just tweaked a tiny bit. And all that information has been put together and sent off to Washington, DC, so we are done, and we are anticipating, yeah, a year and a half of work, coming to a temporary halt. And we're hoping to get notification, hopefully in the next month or two, that we will be accepted and enrolled into the CRS program in May. You know, I think that would, given the town planner's experience, proving her ability in New Haven to get a large city, at least by Connecticut standards, into the CRS program at a level seven, that speaks volumes about of her ability to manage and continue to improve on our CRS position. So it was exciting working on the program and getting the town into it, but I'm looking forward to having Sussmita here to continue pushing us... But I'm looking forward to having Susmita here to continue pushing us, pushing us forward.
Any questions, Mr. Watson?
I just want to make a comment. I hope everyone understands, this deserves word. This really represents Stratford moving to the top of the pack. Our little town, our little city is competing with all the other major cities on the Long Island Sound. And we really are showing ourselves to be leaders. So, thank you again, Jay.
I commend Jay and his office and everybody who worked on getting the paperwork together. As you said, took a year and a half. That's a lot of time, a lot of dedication and effort. But it seems like it's come to fruition for us. And if I'm not mistaken, this will allow us the opportunity to apply for federal grants, which could in the future lower the flood insurance rates of some of our people. Yes?
This will enable all properties in the floodplain areas to have a discount on the national flood insurance policies only, up to $250,000 for residential and even higher for commercial class properties. So, if you have a combination insurance, the NFIP portion will be covered with the discounted rate, like 5% for Class 9, 10% for Class 8, and so on. It moves higher. The good thing, like you said, is that there are only nine or 10 communities in Connecticut that are actually committed to this program and enter the program. So, it's a great achievement on behalf of Jay to actually pull this off alone and get it into the program. So, yeah, you're one of the towns and cities in Connecticut that are, you know, more committed to floodplain management.
Well, congratulations and yay for us.
And I'll just add two more things. You know, the town engineer and conservation administrator were instrumental in a lot of the data collection as well. So, I don't think that it was only myself. I just happened to be the coordinator and get, and I was the person bugging everybody to get, to get the information. And then the second part is that, you know, Susmita and I were talking a bit about, you know, branding the town and how these certain things may seem somewhat trivial. But the outside world is paying attention to these type of things. And we are becoming more attractive, I think, to outside development when, when those larger respected firms are starting to see that, you know, the town is going above and beyond on certain things. So, you know, I think that's an important component. I mean, the 15% reduction, 10, 15% reduction in premiums, that's important as well. But this also better positions the town in a very, very competitive environment that we're in, trying to attract high-quality businesses here and residents.
Well, it sounds like a win-win for everyone. I know that two or three years ago, when they redid the floodplain maps, almost all of the south end of Stratford received a huge increase in flood insurance. And they've been dealing with that. The town had to build the Soto Elementary School up about six feet or something like that to get above the new floodplain elevation. So, it cost the town obviously a lot of money. So, not that it'll change those regulations, but any premium reduction or anything that saves us some money certainly is a win-win. So, thank you very much. Okay, other items? On the other items, we have had for a while that Mr. Staley and I have been discussing and Jay Habansky discussing signage specifically. Just as an explanation, because it's been here for a while and we haven't gone through it or discussed it. We've been looking at West Broad Street in Paradise Green. Where the nonprofits in town and sometimes the profit-making entities will put A-frames and lawn signs all over the area there, on the greens. And unfortunately, as Mr. Staley can attest to, one, they're ineffective. No one can see them. No one can read them, you know, or really know what they're saying. They're inefficient from the standpoint that you have to take them down, cut the grass, put them back up, you know. Sometimes they stay there too long. There's a process, a permitting process that goes through planning and zoning. But, you know, they don't have the manpower to always go out there and double-check. Is it a not-for-profit sign? Is it been there for only two weeks or 10 days, something like that? There's regulations regarding it. So, one of the things we've been looking at or considering doing is looking at digital signage at both locations that would allow nonprofits to put up their who, what, where, when, why information. And then, you know, that would stay up for 30 seconds and then another group. There's a whole science to this. So, we've been discussing some of it. And I know Mr. Staley has done some work on it. So, I'll give it over to you. I'm sorry?
Their HB Communications is, so this is sort of my follow-up report to the last one. And I met with them. We, after our meeting, we met on-site at the two locations, the Main Street and West Broad and Paradise Green, Main and Huntington Road. The, we're looking at approximately 10,500 to 12,000 for a single-side display kiosk. Their, it will need electricity. And depending on whether we go cellular or cable, that's up to, that's down the road. But these stand-up kiosks, so to speak, they are very visible on, they recommended a vertical, not horizontal. And the, because it takes up less space and it goes up higher and if you can see it. The, they have heaters for the winter in them and cooling in the summer. So, that the system, the kiosks are maintained throughout all temperature variations. The, so I, I know where Chair was recommending West Broad as a starting point. But there is more cost to that because it's going to be double-sided on that location. And then there'll be some tree pruning, which might be a little bit difficult. The, they're big trees. The Paradise Green one would be a single sign, well, digital signage. And that would be obviously less to the cost. The, I met with Maurice McCarthy and his deputy. And they must have known about this already because he was all over it. They, they're not in favor of it. They, they first of all, don't know why we would spend money for nonprofits and Stratford's money, they said. And then they, who's going to do the work and keep it on going? So, they were just sort of throwing monkey wrenches in and putting their two cents in. The, I spoke with Stratford Police Officers about what they thought of digital signage in those locations. They, they, two I thought they would come up with would be vandalism and distraction. I don't buy into the distraction one. Drive down 95, interstate and anywhere's really, and you see signage everywheres. The, I looked at the neighborhood over by Paradise Green. And it's really only on the Huntington roadside a few houses, which I don't think would really be impacted by it. The, so we would have to, like I said, add electricity to it. And I know you, I only had a couple copies. But that would be the quickest and fastest installation without having to build stone walls and pillars and so forth. So, I think we're pretty much at the end until we really want to do something as far as investigating. HB Communications, I'm not totally happy with. They're getting back to me. I had to go see the president. Then they all called me.
One of the first things, as a planning commissioner, it's not really our job to, you've done above and beyond to get the information. But our job is to look at the aesthetics of the town, of the, you know, the future development of the town. Mr. McCarthy's concerns as indicated, you know, tho, those are understandable, but we're not there yet. You know, I think we're jumping the gun a little bit here. As far as the police department, I'd like to know then if they're concerned about distractions, then why do they put up a sign across from the firehouse saying that flu shots will be on whatever date? Because they've had that up there. Yeah, yeah. So, I understand their concern. But right now, the question is, knowing some of the ramifications, and this is not something that the planning commissioner goes off and raises $10,000 or $12,000. It could be a recommendation to the CIP. It could be talking to businesses. There are lots of ways that we could go about it. The question is, is this something that is beneficial to the town to take away, in my opinion, the blight and the inefficiency and make it more of a better system? Mr. Sem.
Well, you know, I travel throughout the east and I see a lot of municipalities now, normally around their town hall area, you know, which is Main Street, USA normally, that do it quite often now. I see it in the, you know, town meetings, nonprofits.
High school games.
Yeah. Listen, from a, from a maintenance standpoint with the town, to have to move those signs to mow the lawn and cut around those, those areas, it's a lot. And those signs are unsightly. And they get all over the place. You get a little windstorm and they blow all over. And I think, you know, the cost of $10,000, there is not, well, I would tell you, there's many businesses that, you know, if they got to put a 20-second blurb in there about their business and include nonprofits in there too, there would be a lot of businesses that would like to advertise on there also. So, I think, listen, I think it cleans up a mess. And I know Bill O'Brien has done a great job with some of those, some of those signs that pop up for, you know, gun, you know, if you want to buy a gun, if you, you know, chiropractic, whatever, you know, lawn signs are all over the place. So, I think, I think it's a good solution. It's a real good solution.
I used to install things very similar to this back in the 90s when I had my company.
They had that?
Oh, God, but they cost, but they cost a thou, they cost $100,000. Now, they're down to $10,000. It was a big, there was a huge difference. And I used to do this on corporate campuses also, all around to, you know, menus and all those kinds of things that were all feeding in. It's now common and, yeah, at the time, it was only the people that were, had big budgets could really afford a lot of it.
You see them at high schools now with the, with the high school functions.
Yeah, yeah. So, it's a network that needs to be built. Theoretically, you need to do this with, in all of the, in all of the school camp, in all the school cafeterias and in town hall. And then you really start building a network. And then the cost becomes really a lot less.
Do I get the impression that people are interested in pursuing this? And maybe we'll come up with some, if there's a needed change in regulation, we'll do that or some kind of a written proposal that we can give to the town?
My thought is that this should be presented as a 21st century communications project and that it's a test. Because if this works here, then we're doing complete streets. We could design bus shelters that have these all up and down the street. Then the whole, the whole idea of you could stagger them so that there are different ads in every one. I mean, there are all kinds of things that could be developed. I do know that Complete Streets is trying to put in LCDs and that underneath the bridges. But this would not be a good application there because we don't want any reason for anybody to be distracted. I looked at it several times trying to think, well, we could take the Stratford sign down and do that. But anything you do up there becomes dangerous. You really need those two intersections are, I think, the safest that we could choose to start some kind of a project like.
Okay. In the interest of moving along, we'll come, I'll be honest with you, I'm not going to be at the next meeting. But at the December meeting, I will definitely bring a proposal that we could mark up, change, you know, do whatever you'd like to, so that we can make that to the town, just in time actually for the development of the CIP program. So, and Mr. Sem, your statements about businesses, other not-for-profits, I think you're absolutely right. We could easily make this a project that does not cost the town anything. And as far as maintaining it, vandalism, first of all, they vandalize everything anywhere. You're not going to stop it, is right. Actually, this is harder to vandalize than if you've seen the changeable sign on Paradise Green and West Broad that Celebrate Stratford uses. I mean, they could take those letters right off and change it around. And in the, I can tell you in the five years that I was involved with putting that out, they've never changed the signage. And they could, they could have changed it to some really risque comments and they never have. So, it may not be as big a problem or as expensive an issue as, as some people may think. So, I'll put together a proposal and definitely have it for the December meeting, okay? Now, are there any other items? Any other comments?
Just one thing, is this Jay's last meeting?
I don't think so. He wishes, but.
He wishes, yeah.
I'll probably come for at least one more meeting as Susmita just gets acclimatized to everything here. She might be ready next month though, so.
You never know. Well, hopefully he'll come to the December meeting because we can do something maybe afterwards. What I've sent around is a draft for the dates for our 2019 Planning Commission dates. If you want to take that home, take a look at it. And it will be on the agenda for the November meeting, just to give you a chance to plan ahead. If there are no other comments, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Sem. Second? I need a second, Mr. Vigliotti. We can count on you for that, right? All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. Thank you.